One is that this Saturday morning at nine o'clock at the Winona County History Center, the League of Women Voters is having a forum for elected officials. So it's open to the public. This is your chance to meet local and state elected officials and interact with them and hear what's going on and ask them questions. So Saturday morning, nine o'clock, History Center. There's also another meeting on January 29th here at City Hall at 5:30 PM. It's on Monday, the 29th, and it's about the parking study results. So opportunity for people to hear about that. So those are the only two announcements I wanted to make, and I'll turn it over to the city manager.
I have nothing, Your Honor.
All right, then we'll have roll call.
Counselor, or excuse me, Mayor Peterson.
Here.
Councilman Thurling.
Here.
Craig.
Here.
Alexander.
Here.
Ayden.
Here.
Borzakowski.
Here.
Scholmeyer.
Here.
Under the required public hearings, item 2.1 is the Minnesota Deed: Small Cities Development Program Application.
Okay, it's a public hearing. Clear the public hearing open. And Lucy, did you want to, or Nick? Okay.
Mayor, Council, this public hearing is to gather public input for our full application of the Minnesota Deed for a small cities program where we are requesting $330,000 to be able to perform owner occupied rehab in a 16-block section on the east side of town, and we're running from Front Street up to Fifth and then Hamilton to Laird, and then again Laird to Liberty, and then Fifth to King Street. And this application is due February 23rd, and they'll make announcements if the city has awarded these funds in June of 2018.
Okay. Any questions for Nick? Okay. Anybody else here wish to speak to this topic? Anybody else wish to speak? One final chance. Anybody wish to speak? Clear the public hearing close and ask if there's a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve the attached resolution and citizen participation plan.
Second. Motion by Michelle, seconded by Jerry. Any further discussion? George?
Very good program. I hope we, I know we have been successful, I hope we are again, so.
All right, it sounded a lot of good. All right, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Kerry's.
Under petitions, requests, and communications, item 3.1 is the update on the second train option and high-speed rail commission. Councilman Scholmeyer will have a presentation.
Mayor and council members, I wanted to update my colleagues in the city on the second train progress in light of the media reports, just to make sure that there was no misunderstanding about what was happening, and if there are any questions, hopefully I can answer them. The TCMC is, that acronym means Twin Cities, Milwaukee, Chicago, and as you can see below, and it is an intercity passenger rail. The background, this route or this train will be running on the existing tracks that the Amtrak is currently using between the Twin Cities and Chicago. The schedule will be roughly four to six hours away or apart from the current Amtrak schedule. We'll have up to 13 stations, and I know it says standalone, but it is likely it will be partnering with the High Lotta service that runs from Chicago to Milwaukee. They're looking at adding some additional service from Chicago to Milwaukee in the High Lotta service corridor, and the goal is to take one of those trains and bring them all the way up to Minneapolis. The speed will be approximately 79 miles per hour. That's the max service. Many Amtrak trains are capable of running that speed, and quite frankly, that's high speed in this country. In Europe or Asia, that's different, but you know, this will be the high speed, and of course, that's its max speed. The projected ridership is about 155,000 annually and will have a revenue of about $6.8 million. And of course, here is the existing route and the proposed TCMC route. And so if you've ridden Amtrak to Chicago, you can see this is exactly the same, and will be using the same set of tracks. So the work plan that MidDOT, WISDOT, and Illinois, along with the High Speed Rail Commission have done, a Phase 1 study to go over the purpose and need, some alternatives, operations, and some conceptual engineering and cost estimates. That is about to be finished here in June. In fact, it's for all intents and purposes, complete. We're going to be moving into Phase 2, which is environmental review. We all know environmental review has to happen, and then a potential service development plan, and then after that, Phase 3, or final design and construction. And I say that loosely because again, we are going to be on the current set of tracks, and then hopefully, operation in 2022 if we can get funding. The anticipated cost for funding is approximately $110 million. That will include track and station improvements and the train sets. The operating cost will be approximately $6.6 million between the states of Illinois, Wisconsin, and Minnesota. So the option, why we want to do this, it's going to be, it is a safe, reliable, and dependable. I know that everybody thinks Amtrak, and then the last thing they think of is dependable. This will be a passenger rail or commuter rail basically running on the High Lotta service corridor. It will be running on time. Some of the economic benefits that are estimated, Amtrak alone by itself contracts with 50 Minnesota vendors with an estimated impact of $21 million. There will be infrastructure improvements to enhance safety. This will also aid freight traffic as well, and in particular, there are four locations where there will be some upgrades that they're intending to have to do, and that is here in Winona, at the Mississippi River Crossing, in La Crosse, and in Columbus, Wisconsin. I know there's been a lot of talk about the speed with the tracks or with the trains in light of the Pennsylvania and Washington accidents. If they would have had the positive train control, which Congress has said that should be installed, those accidents would likely not have happened. When this train comes onboard, PTC will be part of the infrastructure improvement. Some of the impacts of tourism, 46% of Amtrak riders are tourists. I would expect that a significant number of the TCMC passengers will be tourists, will be coming to Winona, but also business people who have an opportunity to actually get a daylight train from Chicago to Winona, or from Minneapolis or St. Paul to Winona. A survey conducted in 2016 showed that 23% of Winona college students use Amtrak. Imagine if we have a second train that's a daylight train that can get people here from the Twin Cities during the day at a reasonable hour. This is, this map shows where the expected improvements are going to take place, and here in Winona, we're looking at extended tower at the CK siding and upgrade the existing siding at the Amtrak Winona Depot. We have some issues at the river junction in La Crosse, and of course, one of the, kind of the bottlenecks of the whole CP system between Minneapolis and Chicago is the river crossing, the one bridge which is a, which is a swing bridge, and that's not looking to be replaced anytime in the future. This is why I think this is really important to Winona. This is the TCMC proposed schedule. Winona is in orange on the westbound and the eastbound, and you can see that you will be able to depart Chicago at 10:20 in the morning and get here in time for dinner from Chicago, in time for events that we have going on in town, Great River, Frozen River, Voughtson Bluegrass, any of the events and activities. You'll be able to get on a train as a tourist in Chicago and make it to Winona, get your, checked into your hotel, and make it to your events after a good dinner. If you're coming from St. Paul Union Depot to Winona, the same is true. You have daylight arrivals here on the TCMC schedule. You'll arrive from St. Paul just before 2:00 PM in the afternoon. It's not going to be a sleeping car train. It's going to be a commuter slash passenger rail train. It will have cafe and wireless, but it won't have a formal dining car. I put this together so that you could see what all the stops will be between Minneapolis and Chicago with the Amtrak and TCMC combined, and you can see that we'll have two daily stops, westbound, one at 3:42 and one at 7:47, and then eastbound arrivals at 10:11 and So really, we're getting a daylight train here in Winona with this second option. So we have coming up, funding is needed for Phase 2 and the final engineering. The High Speed Rail Commission does support a state request for a million dollars for the environmental work and three million for Minnesota's share of the final design cost. They're asking constituent communities to also offer their support, and I think I have a resolution that I'll bring to the next council meeting, and if there are any questions, I can try to answer them. Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you, Paul. I have a question, I guess. How can you, how can you be as confident as you are with this train running on a freight line that it's going to stay on schedule?
So part of the infrastructure improvements are going to be side, what do they call those?
Sidings.
Sidings, and we're short on sidings right now. Three or four decades ago, we had two tracks on the Milwaukee Road running all the way from Minneapolis to Chicago, and much of those, that second track has been taken out, but we still have siding, so there will be sidings added. And then they have a software, they actually have designed a software where they can actually, they know where the trains are, and they can side a freight train on the new added sidings and get the passenger train to come through and run on the proper schedule. They're going to, they're going to really want it to run on schedule since it's going to be an extension of the High Lotta service, because going back, it has to hit the schedule on the return.
Will it take priority over some of the freight?
Will.
It will, okay.
Yes.
Well, it's a great idea.
Well, it's a super idea. Man, I think it has potential to really bring a lot of visitors to town here, not just business and students, but a lot of tourists coming to many of the cultural and arts events we have.
I agree. Al?
A couple of questions, Paul. It's a very interesting presentation. I wasn't aware of the TCMC issue. All I was hearing about was the second train via Amtrak or whatever they were working on. I don't know if that was the same thing or not, but I know recently that several members of the legislature have voted, or at least are recommending elimination of Minnesota's funding for some of the support. I believe it was $180,000 or something like that recently, I guess a few days ago. What's your?
It's $188,000, and that's high-speed rail, whole separate shelf and ball game. The second train is in, is entirely separate from that. One of the issues and problems that the High Speed Rail Commission has is making, making their point, their focus and objective is second train.
Right.
And so two years ago, Governor Walker declined a chunk of federal money for high-speed rail, and there was consideration of a, of a new line that could possibly run to Eau Claire in Minneapolis or cross the river and go to Rochester. High speed and zip rail is pretty much on the shelf for the time being, and the High Speed Rail Commission, their sole focus right now is second train. So that media exposure has nothing to do with the second train.
Okay.
Nor does the funding.
Yeah, my second question is, in your slides, you mentioned a rail crossing at Winona. I know historically, we had a couple of rail crossings, the Green Bay and then, and then the other swing bridge crossing. Where's the crossing in Winona, I guess?
No, it was in La Crosse. It's a river crossing in La Crosse. It's a swing bridge there.
Okay.
And it is a bottleneck. Everything that goes that direction and this direction has to go over that bridge if it's crossing. That's Amtrak, that's freight, that's the CP.
Right. I was confused in your presentation about that.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Well, thank you, Paul.
And moving on to item 3.2, a request for utility bill reduction for Helen Brotz of 67 West Sarnia. Is there someone here to speak for her?
Okay, if you'd like to speak, step up to the podium and state your name and address.
Larry Brotz from Rochester, Minnesota. It's my mother's place on Sarnia, and anything you could do to help a 94-year-old mother with a pretty big surprise bill from the water department would be appreciated.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Brotz?
Al, has she come before us before with a request to reduce a water bill?
She's never been before, come before.
Okay. I've noticed on the bill history, there were some reductions in some bills, and I don't understand the shorthand. It says CNCL rev reduction on a couple of instances, so I don't know what that.
Must be something the water department has done in some sort of way.
So I mean, I'm glad you're here to clarify that. I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
What's your motion? Anybody'd like to make? George?
Mayor, from looking at the difference in the water bill from 683 to 29, where it was 65 at one time, and most of the requests that come to us are due to toilets that are, that are running, they're not properly shut off, and then of course, they do have them repaired. Tonight, I would make a motion that we reduce the water bill by the sanitary sewer fee of $285.95.
I will second that. There's a motion from George and seconded by Al. Further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Five to. Kerry's.
And item 3.3 is some Masonic Temple rigging system update.
Ed?
Mayor and council, we have Dania here from Miller Dunwoody. I'll call her up here in a second. Just want to remind you that tonight, we're reviewing the 90% drawings for the Masonic Temple, next phase of our renovations at that facility. This includes the rigging updates, code updates, some electrical updates. We did provide some contingency dollars in the event that bids come in low for some alternate items like seating and lighting, which we'll go over in the presentation as well. So this is an update for you, and a chance to ask any questions about the 90% drawings, and then in February, we'll bring back documents asking for authorization to go up for bid on the project. With that, I'll turn it over to Dania from Miller Dunwoody.
Thank you.
Can you help my board with this?
Yeah. Good evening. It's a, can you hear me? Maya? It's a pleasure to be back here this evening to go over the set and let you know where we're at on the status. You'll see, I do have a presentation and some highlights of some of the drawings. Just want to go through, as Chad mentioned briefly, the project intent again was to upgrade the rigging system and to address portions of the code compliance related to the toilet rooms. The project understanding is that currently, as we modify the second floor auditorium and stage to allow performance and events use, that it will also include some theatrical and film. There will be limited use during the summer months until a fully functional HVAC system is installed, and that HVAC work is a future project. The toilet room count and accessibility of toilet rooms and dressing rooms are addressed within this, within this work, and that all work is designed to meet the Secretary of Interior Standards, and that's important because you do have a nationally registered building. Really quickly, as Chad mentioned, we are looking to move forward on bidding during February, or starting in February, moving into construction start and demolition and the completion of toilet rooms by the end of April, and then moving into the rigging, demolition, and structural reinforcement and rigging installation, May through July, with substantial completion in August. This will be adjusted based on the contractors. We will allow the contractors some flexibility in how they organize their project, and again, what we're really focused on is making sure that we get a good product, but also making sure we get good bids. We are in a good economy, which also means that we tend to get bids that are very aggressive. So just want to go through for you, I'm going to go floor by floor to help you understand what we are touching in the building with this project. The plan that you have up here, I apologize, it's a little fuzzy. It is enlarged from the construction documents. This is the lowest level, the basement level. In order for us to put in the plumbing, we will be impacting this lower level. This is an unfinished space. It has a concrete floor exposed structure, but there will be work in this area to route the plumbing. On the first floor, which is currently the friendship floor, we will be doing some work in the ceilings and adding pipe chases through this area of the building, but we are not impacting any other area. That will be coordinated with the user groups, the occupants in that level. And then also to highlight that the existing current accessible entrance on the side of the building will be, will remain and be used in the future as well. With the main entrance into the second floor, we'll still be coming up through the main entrance to the building and up these stairs. As we look at the second floor, this is the floor that is impacted the most by the scope of work. This is the stage house, and this is where the rigging work will take place. This is the auditorium, and this is where we are doing some modifications to the sides in order to remove those raised platforms, and I'll go through the seating options that we're looking at for this area. In the stage house, we are looking at, and I'll go through more specifically with some sections of the rigging. We are retaining the rigging that is on stage right, so the historic rigging in place, but it will be made unfunctional so that it is there just for the historic element. We are placing the new rigging on stage left. We are updating this staircase in order to meet some of the egress or exiting requirements, and the changes in this area really have to do with some doors and changing of door swings and hardware. And then in this area, we are impacting it in order to put in the new toilet rooms. On the third floor, the only work that we will be doing at this time is related to bringing up some shafts for venting of the toilet rooms. This is a plan of those toilet rooms that are proposed. We are proposing a five-stall women's restroom. We are also proposing a unisex, accessible restroom, and an accessible dressing room on the side of the building as well. There is an alternate currently to change this area into an additional men's room, and I'll explain to you how we're looking at bidding alternates in order to remain within This is a section through the stage house, so this drawing is shown as if you were standing on the stage, looking out into the audience. What is stage left is here on the left, and stage right. Stage right is where the historic rigging will remain. Stage left is where the new rigging will be placed, and then there'll be work above the existing wood grid up at the top of the stage house for the rigging to be placed. This is a section going the other direction, which shows you the number of line sets that we are proposing and the configuration of those line sets. There is some flexibility, in particular within the general purpose, as well as the placement of what, what will be placed on the first three. So there is some flexibility in order for changes between performance types and different uses. There are also lighting locations or electrical locations that are placed for those applications as well. This shows you the auditorium itself and the proposed seating configuration. This is a portable, movable seating system. It does allow for all of the risers that you see to be folded up and the floor to be open for standing room type events or for seated events at tables and chairs. The system comes with the risers that you see as well as movable chairs so that you can change those configurations, as shown with the balcony seating remaining as is. Facility seats, I'm going to quick check because I think it's 279, with a standing room of 300. And that is my presentation of the scope of work. I will let you know that right now, as we have the documents completed at 90%, the budget for the project is at, the total construction budget is at $1.875 million. This does include $156,000 contingency, so a 10% owner contingency, which is our recommendation as we move into bids. We are looking at including a number of deduct alternates so that we have some flexibility in awarding. So there will be included in that, we are looking at including this, the seating. We are also including the lighting. These elements are equipment and can be purchased at different times or can be purchased at different cost points, particularly the lighting package could be separated in order for us to make sure that depending upon the bidding climate, that we do meet budgets that you can proceed. So those types of alternates will be included in the bid form. So those types of alternates will be included in the bid form. That's my brief presentation on where the scope is and where the documents are. As I mentioned, they are at 90 percent. We will be completing those in the next month and coming forward for approval to bid. Are there any questions?
Paul?
The equipment chase, will that accommodate the future HVAC upgrades?
The equipment chase?
Yeah, the chase that you were talking about between the basement, second floor and third floor, will that accommodate future, or will that be, will the future HVAC upgrades need a chase in order to?
The future HVAC upgrades will need a chase. The chase, the small shafts or chase that we're putting in for this project are related to plumbing, so basically waste, water piping, as well as small vents that will ventilate those spaces. In the future, when we do the HVAC, the largest chase runs that currently are with the HVAC and that we propose to do in the future are on the stage, and we are placing the rigging in such a way that we can accommodate that on the stage again. We are reconfiguring where, let me see if I can get back to that for you. So currently, how the best place to show this, is there are two existing duct runs that are currently not functioning on this sidewall. We are removing those, and there'll be new duct runs that will come over here that will be out of the way of the rigging in the future HVAC project. The goal of the project was that in the future, when the HVAC work does come in, we won't have to take out anything that we've put in, but there is going to need to be work done in order to accommodate that.
George, you had a question?
Yes. Are there going to be any kitchen facilities in there?
There are no kitchen facilities in this current scope.
Okay, what will be, you know, you may have showed it on there, but you didn't know where the kitchen was. What's going to be in that area, then?
So the spaces that I am showing, basically in white, so anything that's not in yellow will remain as is. So currently, you do have what is kind of a serving area that was used previously. That will remain as is in this project.
Al, thank you. I appreciate the presentation. I like the idea of the flexible seating and the numbers you talked about were probably right in the ballpark of probably the best use of that space and numbers for accommodation of that, at least in my experience, anyway. Are you planning to do anything with the floor of the stage at all? I can't remember if that was part of one of the discussions we had.
So the floor of the stage will be repaired, and it will be painted.
Okay.
Yep, so it will look new and it will be sound again.
Okay, I was just going to state that. And I know this is more toward Chad, I see that the moving truck was there yesterday, and the, it looks like, I have a picture here of somebody carrying out very long tubes into this moving truck, and they were spending most of the afternoon doing that. And I guess as long as we're talking about this, I assume this is the delivery to Des Moines.
Mayor and Council, the activity you saw yesterday was the removal of the drop since associated set pieces. They are officially removed from the facility. Sale document signed, and sale price is finalized, and items are out of the building.
I know this is not, you know, your scope, but it relates to the building you're dealing with, so. And I can send you the picture, Chad, if you like.
Great. And certainly the removal of those items are, this is all part of the timing and the process of how we get to this next stage, the next step in the process, so.
And what happens to the floor in the seating area?
The floor in the seating area, so that currently is carpet. That will come up and be refinished in order to have a more durable floor for the type of events.
And all that seating that collapses is stored off to the side where the raised floors?
It does, it kind of stores in its own tower, and that tower gets pushed against the wall.
Paul?
The collapsed wall seating is pushed back to the back wall. Will we still be able to use the side risers for seating?
The side risers here, actually, let me give you that again. So the side risers in this project, you know what, let me go to the seating background. So the side risers in this project actually come out of the project, and there will be an alternate to have removable partition or removable platforms that can come back in. That will be one of the alternates that we'll have for the project.
Handicap?
Yes. Handicap seating is accommodated. It's not shown very specifically on this. In the final document, it will be, but there is handicap seating that occurs in this front area. We have initially reviewed this with the city, and we are able to accommodate the counts for this facility.
Thank you. It almost looks to me like there's room for a row of seats along each of the sides there, but.
You do need to have an exit aisle.
Okay.
But I appreciate your.
Somebody else fire, you know?
No, it just still looks like.
Standing room wall.
Are there any other questions?
I guess not. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate the update.
And moving on to new business. Item 5.1 is the City of Winona Housing Task Force Recommendations. I make a motion to accept the resolution and the recommendations from the Housing Task Force.
Second.
Motion from Michelle, and I think a second from Pam. I'll call on Nick.
Mayor and Council, overall, I want to thank Council and Port Authority for contracting Maxfield Re-Street, for being able to have the housing study done, and along with all the Housing Task Force members and their hard work, along with the contributing organizations such as Minnesota Housing, and the nonprofit developers Common Bond, and Three Rivers to help guide us and give us their professional input on housing in the city of Minnesota, and more importantly, Greater Minnesota.
Comments or questions? Al? Yeah, I have a question. Part of the recommendation talks about in several places allocating funding from local government aid. And, you know, I'm a little, I agree with the overall intent of this report, and I think it's a good report, and the committee, you know, Task Force did a really good job, but I'm a little concerned about the focus on local government aid. I mean, we, as a city, are grateful for the local government aid, and I think we've made very good use of those funds in, you know, in the past. My concern, however, is to further divide the pie even smaller with the funds that would go toward another program. And I guess my question is, where does the council come in with programs that may or may not come forward under this recommendation and guideline? In other words, will we get a chance to say yea or nay on some of these programs that this very nice report has outlined?
Mayor and Council, on, I would have to say overall, yes, any recommendations of city staff working on grant applications or awards for housing development would come forth to you for direct men's staff to make those. When it would come to our others toolbox with utilizing energy efficiency tools through Excel Energy, that would most likely be left in the hands of the developer to make those decisions on their own if they want to utilize those programs.
Yeah, I think the council needs to have control over those local government aid dollars, and I'm just stating that now. I will support the motion, however, with that caveat. Well, we do through the regular budget process. I know that, but I mean, I'm just saying that, you know, we need to talk about it now, or at least discuss it now. Michelle?
Yeah, well, I'm with Al, of course, but I think what was made clear in the meeting, and if I'm understood correctly, that even if we accept this entire document, we do not have to agree that every one of these items that were recommended to us of the many that they gave would be ones that we'd have to use, is my, so with you, I agree. I always get nervous when we start allocating local government aid because there's never a guarantee of amount or if it's forever.
No, it isn't.
And I think it's, obviously, if something came forward and we, as a council, whoever's here, said, you know, it's worth this year taking that money and allocating it to this project, fine, but I think, just so we're all on the same page, I would agree with Al there, that every one of these would need to be approved as we move forward. They can't just be used. I think that's what I understood.
Mayor and Council, that is 100 percent correct. So in essence, this large document or financial tools can help act as a framework to help guide us on a case-to-case basis. And if we are going to use any of the tools, and that would be even staff time to write grants or to use local funding, all that would have to come before Mayor and Council for approval for that. And to kind of touch on the local government aid, one of the reasons why that was put in was because of the increase that Minnesota City's received this past year. So thinking just in the future and to give us more flexibility of those funds, we wanted to make sure that we included that within our recommendations.
George?
And it says right here as well, too, that the approval of the recommendations does not financially obligate the city to incentivize all housing development. So it pretty much states here, we would have the say on that.
Anything else? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion Kerry's.
Item 5.2 is the Minnesota Department of Employment and Economic Development, reuse of revolving loan fund dollars. I make a motion that we agree with the Port Authority's recommendation, authorize staff to proceed with this one-time exception.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, and seconded by George. Any discussion? George?
Yeah, Lucy could explain what we, what we're all doing here. Heard it, but, you know, here and again.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So before you tonight is, the Port Authority reviewed this item at their last meeting and is recommending approval. We have a revolving loan fund and have helped many, many businesses, and we have federal and then state funds. In this past legislative session, they allowed a one-time opportunity to take a percentage of those state funds, and if 20 percent is paid back to the state, we could keep the 80 percent here, and it could be used for those unique loan situations without having all of the state requirements tied to it. So for example, some businesses we can't loan funds to, retail would be an example. The prevailing state wage rates on a construction project apply. So what this does is gives us a little bit more flexibility in making loans and using it for economic development projects. Another example would be, we have been working with Winona State University and St. Mary's on an entrepreneurial co-work space, and there's been about 18 months' worth of work put into this project. And an example of a project where this loan could work would be that space that the Port's been working on.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Kerry's.
Item 5.3 is the telephone system upgrade. Make a motion to approve the attached purchase agreement.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, and seconded by George. Any discussion? Is this something that is required to have a competitive bid on or anything like that, or is it just moving forward with an upgrade that this vendor has provided?
It's under the required amount for a formal bid, so we did get a quote from our current vendor. It's an upgrade to the current system.
Thank you. Anything else? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Kerry's.
Item 5.4 is the comprehensive parks plan proposal. Make a motion to direct staff to execute the proposal.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, and seconded by Paul. Discussion?
I'm so happy, so happy to see this coming forward and to have this happen. I think we discussed this, it feels like years ago, but I think you had told me maybe in 1982 is the last time we looked at our parks. And then you look at this, and there's 27 parks plus facilities. I think it's long overdue, so I'm really pleased. Especially as we're talking about bike trails and walking trails and upgrading our system, we should have a better idea of what we really need and when. So I'm very, very happy to see it.
Were there other proposals? No? Those are required. Al? Just a minor point on the work plan and scope. They talk about evaluation of parks and facilities, and they're mentioning the Senior Center. I believe it's now the Friendship Center, so, just a minor point. I do read the documents. Ensures. We know you do, Al. I'm sure other ones do, but, you know.
That's a glaring error.
I noticed it, so did.
We know better than that. Staff appreciates the council's support in having the funding for this project and the last bond issue.
George?
Is this also going to include a gaming park?
For a second, I thought you meant a gambling park.
Mayor and Council, this would include Agamemnon Park. To what extent we look at Agamemnon Park certainly is to be determined. The plan that was developed a few years ago, and I'm blanking on the date, we'll relook at that plan to make sure that everything is, in a sense, in order. But yes, Agamemnon would be part of that, of this plan as well.
So I think it almost stretches down to home, or does it not?
Yep.
So it covers, yeah. Right, good.
Mayor and Council, Mayor, you asked about if we should receive any other proposals. We did not. We did ask ISG for this proposal. Part of that rationale is because of the strong baseline information that they already have with Levy Park, as I mentioned in the document, a council action item, with the Rose Garden as well now recently. So they have a lot of our baseline information. We thought that was important so that we're not necessarily paying for that a second or third time. So we're confident in ISG's ability to execute this plan.
They've done good work, definitely. All right, anything else? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Kerry's.
Item 7.1 is council concerns.
We'll start from the far left. Al? I have nothing tonight, Mayor and Council. Wow. Kerry?
I'm rather shocked that it all passed.
I said enough tonight.
You okay?
Michelle?
The West End sits happy, I guess.
All right. How about mid-city here?
Paul?
Come on, I got to start this out. So one of my many hats is I direct the Regional Science Fair here in southeast Minnesota. And coming up on February 7th is a smaller local fair at the Winona Middle School. And we welcome anyone who would be interested in judging fifth graders at the Winona Middle School Science Fair. You can contact me, you can reach me at my city office or through the Regional Science Fair website, February 7th. That's all.
Okay, thank you, George.
You know, the fourth ward always has something, so. Good presentation, Paul, earlier today. This afternoon at the Winona HRA Meeting, Housing and Redevelopment Authority, James Kirk was re-elected vice chairman. I was re-elected chairman, and the other members of the board are Matt Hazelton, Robert Hyverley-Johnson, and Rachel Smith. So that is the HRA board for the upcoming year and its officers, so. And they do the public housing sector very, very well. And also, we have train delays on Mankato Avenue. We had them Saturday, and we had them yesterday, and we had them today from, Hamilton was blocked all the way down where Louisa Street was blocked. Go Vikings.
That's right. Purple Power.
And under the consent agenda, there are two items, the approval of the minutes from January 2nd, and the final adoption of an ordinance to rezone 1150 Gilmore Ave. Make a motion to approve?
Second. Motion by Michelle, and seconded by Al. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Mayor, I move we adjourn.
Second that.
Motion of the second to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we adjourn.